Good, okay. As I mentioned in my email, I think we're about to wrap things up. And for the planning board to turn this scoping document over to town board or Ray or whoever, who would immediately put it into, and we get it started or town board needs to deliberate on it, after which, I think that, I think we're about to sign boarding. So this is sort of an opportunity to just read those feedback on pieces in there a little bit here. First of all, minutes, I got feedback on both the April 3rd, the 5-1, the May 1st minutes. I wrote a couple of things down. One was a note, I think that we got some NAN relative to extending public water into various areas, you know, we need to be careful about that because, because I wanted to feel comfortable with that. Uh, places, so I include that in the scoping document. Another request was that we be clear that accessory dwellings units will be by right, and barn and all zones already by right elsewhere, and that was already in the scope, but I clarified, strengthened that. Um, also that tiny homes will be included in the definition of when you factor them. And it would be by right wherever sites of homes slash A D E's are allowed, and that was in the scope, they expect to make it. But then we cleared it sometimes, too. And then finally, in the last minutes, I included in the body of the minutes, big block of information from the conference and plan, and also from zoning, that wasn't provided at the meeting, and Barbie, you pointed out that technically that should be very clear, that wasn't in the examination of that. Uh, and also there's a correction, and there were, I had one of the acreages wrong. Where I listed two acres per lot, and they're back to one. And the important thing about that is that, unfortunately, all the residential zones here in Brad, whether it's neighborhood residential conservation, the lot size is the same. And that was one of the things that NAN pointed out, that in the interest of preserving rural character and things like that, it's pretty unusual to not differentiate things like lot sizes, and so that's why I put that in there first. So anyway, all that said, I think the minutes are done. Like, out of a motion to
This is the April 3rd one, except.
Yeah, or we can do a lot of lots of people.
Uh, yeah, so it's the two, I moved it, we've got group of them.
One second.
I have one comment for that. Oh, alright, so.
I don't know if we vote.
Did we vote?
It's planning board.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
Did we make a determination? What apparently we're going, decks will be included? So I know there was discussion, I just couldn't remember what was on.
Yeah, I think we're, we are, it's, it is in phase one. Yep, and I guess we'll get to that, right, John?
Yep, that's a nice agenda.
That was it.
Sorry, what's the answer to that question? Yes.
Yes.
I also just wanted to make sure.
Alright, so we have minutes.
Oh, you'll be heard, that we didn't do the all-in-bay part yet.
What's the name?
Well, she can handle posted, yes. I don't know if she will post them directly, but.
I know, I'm not supposed to.
Okay, so the next item, this is a Janice item, and I wanted to say, uh, this was to make adjustments to things that the GBA are interested in having, had slipped in because in Nan's comments on the definitions, or the definition setback, she recommended that it be from the ceremony. And when we put the scope together, I just put that in with all the rest of the stuff, it sounded like a good idea. And then you picked up on it, and then wanted to elaborate a little bit.
Right.
And so that's what you have here.
Yep, yep. So the three things that John was going forward in phase one is to allow accessory buildings in the re- as long as they're not in the required front yard. So if there's a setback of 50 feet, that accessory building can't be in that 50 feet, but it could be past that. And why this comes up over and over again for us, sometimes a house will be 600 feet from the road, the accessory building will be 550 feet from the road, and they still have to come. And whenever it's not in a required front yard, we have for years approved it. I can't imagine how we wouldn't. So it just would save homeowners and the planning department and the zoning board lots of um, time for, for what's become just kind of this routine approval. You know, if it's 49 feet and setback is 50, they gotta come to us for a variance. That, so that was one, which was sort of high on our agenda. Uh, the other thing is what John just mentioned, that we have often come across, so where do you measure if it's the front yard? Where's, does, does it side of the road, and road is it? And so that would be the setback is from the center line or center, sometimes there's not a line in rural roads, but you can measure with the center, and that's how you measure setbacks from that. Because that was never clear in the code exactly how you measure it.
Well, and I like that because like, for example, on my road, the town has, the town owns the road, so there's a distinct right, and when my property was not built up to the edge of the road, because there's a right.
Right.
So, yeah, so with setback, um, if you go from the property line, it would be for the back, on the road mine connects to, property lines go to the center of the road, and the town has a right there.
Right.
Through the road.
So this makes it more consistent for everyone.
Yep.
And again, a lot of, this has to do with, you can get out of tape measure and figure it out.
Right.
And so the last thing is also sort of based on that, so a code officer or a person can, the, there was nowhere in our definitions of what a building area is, and so, um, it's here, and it's saying, and I, I read codes from tons of towns. We had talked about eaves and all that, and no town seemed to include those. And that makes sense when you start to talk to people doing this work, and homeowners, so it's hard to take your tape measure and figure out if the eve is way up there. So again, the, I can read this, the total of areas taken on a horizontal plane at the made grade level of a structure, exclusive of terraces, uncovered steps, uncovered patio slabs, and uncovered decks less than 30 inches above adjoining grade level. Again, this has to do with building, once you get a certain grade, you've got to have railings, there's a whole other thing that would kick in. So this, um, is under those different bars, and that way, when you say, um, you can have, you can clarify accessory structure for, you never knew what the building area was. It's, the code says 200 square feet or less, but what does that include? Now, if you just put a building area of 200, whatever the number is, you now know what you're measuring. So those were the three things that would, zoning would be very happy to.
So you're not going to measure what's cantilevered houses?
Yeah, that's a whole thing, and I read about that. I mean, the you can cantilever to make it bigger. But I think who, someone, somebody who I asked about this and read it, there is, um, talk to me exactly what you're thinking.
Well, I was just wondering, most of Eastern Heights, it's those cantilevered houses.
You'd still have, you'd still have to measure, yeah. You'd still have to have a setback on the, on the footprint, the ground footprint. Because you don't want to go over the setback and then have like a track through it.
Yes, I was just wondering, I mean, those, those cantilevered houses aren't usually more than like that much, each delivered of, of house. But I'm having, I'm trying to, I know they cantilever like, um, decks.
Give you an example, my house.
Okay.
My, my house is two stories.
Yep.
The second floor is two feet bigger than the first floor.
Yes, okay, and I did.
Sticks out two feet further.
Further, right.
Over.
Right.
Uh, the front. So if you measure it at ground lo-, at grade level, you're going to get a smaller footprint than if you measure it.
Right.
Looking down on it.
Exactly, yeah, and I did talk to Ray, and I think Gina, and, um, as well as Craig and Ben Curtis, who knows everything, lots of it. And, and I looked at zillions of towns, and they just exclude that again, it's, it's, boots on the ground, measure from what's
Makes it simple.
Yeah.
It really doesn't matter a lot.
Well, then you're right, and, and right, in the case of, right, but I mean, how far can you?
But so to play with that, mine can only result in eight feet, and then there's an eight-foot deck, so that adds 16 feet.
So that uncovered deck?
It is an uncovered deck.
And is it less than, I don't know, your inches off the one?
It's, it's like 14 feet off the ground.
See, that, that was my question, that was the other question I had, is that you said uncovered decks that were
Less than 30 inches above.
Less than 30, if you've got a, if you've got a second floor deck that comes out 10 feet, that counts as part of the footprint, then, right?
Yeah, it's gotta be the footprint as if you put a, if you, it seems to me that if you put a flashlight over top of the house and you threw the shadow onto the ground, that, that's what you'd go with, only because if I think of setbacks from a safety perspective, like making sure that fire trucks can make the turn. So if you're cantilevering out an extra 16 feet, that's going to impact like, say, fire.
You're going to have supports on the ground, right?
That's true.
Two posts.
Yeah, I think then that, those posts become the horizontal grade.
That's right.
Once you cantilever out past two feet, you're starting to have to have support from the ground. Yeah, yeah, we don't have wonky houses, but, but I think, and, and Nan can make sure that that's the case.
Right.
But I think that was the other thing, once you start going big like that.
Right.
Or high, then you start having ground support and then.
It's very rare, flowing waters is, is the upset.
Well, of course, of course. Has this whole 70s kids. And there were kit houses in the 50s, so there's, but granted, they're in the woods, but if I'm thinking of like fire truck access, that's.
Yeah, I, it I don't think we need to solve that here. I, I, I think that the point is, we need to have a clear, easy definition of how to determine.
Right, and, and so, right, this seemed to work for, um, Gina and Ray and him liking, um, Dave Sprout, especially, as well as people in the building
Okay.
trade, and I'm sure Nan can, can give us advice moving forward, if there's some way, if we're worried about the can.
Like where you're measuring the setback.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because you're right, if it's the eve of the house.
It might, it might be as simple as saying, if the cantilever is going to be more than X many feet, then we do need a idea.
Well, I think that's just the case.
It's still steep home.
That, that is the case, I think that's already the case, that it's, you would need a special, you couldn't just get away with doing it, because already going above grade, so.
Do we ask if Nan has a thought?
Uh, I, I it sounds awfully complicated to me, uh, um, it's not often that people, you know, I, is this, is a cantilevered issue, I mean, is that a big issue that you're dealing with on a regular basis?
I don't think so, that's why, and that idea of this was for it to be very simple.
Right.
I mean, if you start to have supports from the ground, then comes your measuring point, and if you're cantilevering past a foot or two, you gotta have supports on the ground.
Right, so that, that definition that you gave.
She knew she has to develop the language, right?
Right.
So didn't she just say, she was just saying something to us?
I was just going to say that definition that you read, can you give it to John or someone to get to me?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the minutes, and yes.
Oh, okay, um, the one question that I had, your, your, your first point about variances, um, if you could go back, I know we, we talked about this a long time ago. I, I don't understand what you said about, like, if it's 49 feet and not 50 feet. Uh, tell me again what specifically you're looking for to address accessory buildings in the front setback.
Okay, I, I'm trying to, to make it clear that you can't put it an accessory building in the required front yard.
Right, oh, okay, yeah, I mean, is that an issue, that's been an issue now?
Yes, because the, the definition doesn't say required, it just says front yard. So even if it's 550 feet from the road, it's, and it's still the front yard, they have to come for a variance.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's just, it's a simple thing, nobody, one word required.
Yep, okay, now I, I, I just was not making the connection there, yep, no, I get it, yep.
Awesome. Good. Yeah, so this discussion is a good example of what I would call scope creep. That I, that I let slip in is scope, the original scope for the phase one update, first started to keep it simple, low aim proof, and then it was housing, data centers, battery storage, and anything that was grossly illegal. And this seemed like a really simple thing, so it went, but these things get complicated. Uh, and so the next agenda item are some other things that I let slip within scope that turned out to be way bigger and more complicated than uh, we might think of in the low, paying fruit. Uh, but one of them was getting into chapter 240 subdivisions, and we make a change, for example, that there would no longer be the plain major subdivision, but all subdivisions would be minor, or would be conservation, I'm sorry. That turned out to be a complicated thing, not a simple change. Uh, and also, uh, front footage adjustments are definitely complicated, but not something that we will easily solve without large, time-consuming discussions, but the, the low aim true. So, so at the planning board meeting, um, last month, we took all work on 240, that was the phase one scope. Nothing in the subject, coordinates in phase one. Another one that.
John, I, I have I'm so many big documents, you know. So I've been trying to track the project plan draft. And like, the latest one I have is dated March 20th. But then we sent this that's probably not what we're supposed to be looking at.
So the, the one that I sent with the agenda for this meeting was the latest one, it was graph number three. And that's the one that has text engraved.
Well, I wish, I wish, I wish we could, like, share the screens, everybody's looking at the same thing, is that something we can do?
Okay. Um, try. The project plan draft three is out between 25. You can see your NAN is right here, Martha, if you want it.
Do you want me to put it up? I got it up on my screen.
That would be great, thank you.
So we're, we're looking at the one called project plan draft three, final draft, right?
Yeah, I have to.
Hold on, you may have to have permission, hold on.
Oh, I do, yep. Let me, let me turn my, if you turn, okay, I'm gonna try again.
Here it is, too.
Oh, you still have to turn, you still have to let me share.
We're working on it, hold on.
Oh, okay.
It's not working, everything's complicated, isn't it?
That's okay. It is, yeah.
It took me seven years to decide that it's true.
I'm not going to lose sleep over it, I mean.
No, no, I'm going to let those others sit down here.
Everything is complicated.
Oh, yeah, just let it.
Okay.
Allow, there you go, just say allow there, yep. You should be good now.
Okay.
What? Just making you add. I love the limitations.
So Martha, did you have a comment about, to kind of see what related to subdivisions out of the same form?
Wanted to make sure I'm looking at the same thing, so that whole conversation we had last time. Is that where we're saying, too complicated, we'll do it in phase two?
So at the end of the last meeting, we got into a conversation about density goals and consistency with the comprehensive plan tenant that says we need to preserve the rural, uh, rural peripheral right. Uh, and that turned into a big discussion. Uh, so after that, um, and that will be agricultural advisory committee to have a discussion about their products on density. And the first piece of that was a clear consensus in the group that residential development creates compatibility problems to agriculture. Uh, he talked about trespass, they talked about people complaining about voters, just lots and lots of stuff. There was a clear, uh, opinion from the folks on the AAC that uh, to the extent that we can keep those things separate, that would be good. So then the next thing I brought up was, okay, one of the ways you do that is with density. Making it so that there are fewer homes per unit, neighborhood, whatever. Uh, and they were a uniform on that, they said that doesn't solve the problem. All you're doing is making it so that the lots get bigger, uh, that's just that much less land that's available for agriculture. Um, so I heard that loud and clear from them, and I went home and thought about it, so I started thinking about, okay, we're preserving the rural character of, of driving for food. And, you know, for one thing, we're, we're doing it for the farmers, and it's clear in the comprehensive plan that we want to preserve farmland. But I just heard loud and clear from the AAC that density controls don't help them at all. And, and what more I thought about it, I said, you know what, this didn't belong to page one, this is not what they approved, it had nothing to do particularly with housing, and somehow, the really big topical area of preserving rural character slipped into the scope, it was my fault. So it shouldn't be the.
We talked a lot about the, um, conservation board clustered out, cluster housing, because there was a rep there from the Ag discussion, and there was a lot of support for clustered housing models, like you see in Europe, so that you're saying, all right, you're going to develop 10 acres, but two acres is out of one housing, and the other eight make open space for mental health, animal health, cultural well-being, so I hear it's not in phase one, but I don't want to lose it.
Oh, what is it, thank you. Well, that's, that's good to say, and the, the next one on the agenda, and the most, the thing that I did put into phase one, uh, after I had a discussion with Nan about it, it's the flexible site design pieces that you find in conservation subdivision. Uh, we're going to try and create text so that that flexible site design is available for projects that don't subdivide land. So these are for property owners who want to create a rental community, for example, that's on one lot, and, uh, and and we've got examples of, of little development, rebuild, or some of the, this, this, change of that. Uh, right now, to do that in a large area is complicated, it's sort of complicated, we will try to raise that. We'd like to make.
The shingle, the shingle houses in favor, so that's all one parcel.
Yes.
Buildings are rentals.
Yes.
Yeah, but like, I think so many owned, but it would be, because it has to have a shared water source, you know, you'd have to have a community, and you'd have to have sewage in the way or something.
Like, I was talking to someone who wanted to do like, five, like, not tiny houses, but tiny houses, shared water and everything, as affordable housing for elderly people, and who would then also share services.
So the lots are sold, with, with, with a subdivision, then people buy the lots, then it can be done in the conservation subdivision for us. That, again, provides great flexibility on its own site.
So you said you want to allow, want to create, write a new article to allow, to sort of articulate if these different flavors would be a, a value.
That the concept involved with conservation subdivision, right, sort of site design, and that's when they're going to take pieces of site, site on site for public use, for example, those things would be.
Buffer zone, so that it's a buffer to the farms.
Uh, all of those things would be, uh, much more flexible than what they are right now in town, and if we allow a property owner to create a solution, from, or to say, I want to create some unique residential community. Here's my idea, and the planning board would be able to entertain that under the new law.
And you didn't want to discuss this, man?
I think he's starting, I think he's starting this phase, saying this is not.
No, I think it's trying to discuss it now, um, we, we don't have a whole lot, uh, so, I had this discussion with Nan, and I think she understood what it was that we were looking for, and, uh, the next piece of that would be for her to write, I would, that actually define what does that mean?
It does have a phase one.
Okay, yeah, it is in phase one. Also, things like a land trust, or a housing trust, so that INHS owns the land and somebody owns the house that sits on the.
And there, and there's no subdivision, it's privately owned house on somebody else's land.
On the land.
Would, would work on this.
That would work.
There'd be, it's almost like a condo, right, where you're selling, you're selling the structure, not the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that means a lot of our costs, approximately. Including, including the nature and open space and all.
So that, that has to be, there's, uh, public. To do. You're going to get your septic and your water on someone else's land?
No, no, it's shared. If it's a.
It's, it's a community.
Oh, it's a community, that's a whole other thing.
Yeah, then it's a co-op, a co-op.
Yeah, co-op, co-op.
So you actually are part owner of that, right? You still.
No, you're not, you're not owner of the land, you're owner of the structure.
Personally owner of the structure.
Right.
But you'd, if it's a co-op, you're part owner of the land too.
Right, the difference between a co-op and a condo, that's the difference.
Right, and if you're putting your water and your septic on something, you know, like if somebody builds a house on my place, I say, okay, you can own the house, but I own the land, and then I can say, guess what? No septic anymore.
No, the property owner would have an argument to do that, the developer, property owner would have to provide the water and septic as part of the land use.
Yeah.
I mean, if you think of, think of, think of it like a mobile, like, I'll, I'll use an example, there are mobile home parks.
Yeah.
That are in rural areas that don't have, uh, public utilities on water, so, so I know one, there's one on Woodrow, they have he make, the owner maintains the wells and the septic.
If there's more than five people on a well, it's a public water supply.
Right, right, so he maintains a, his own.
I mean, Martin was doing that too, but it actually was a public water supply. So we're suggesting, we're asking, we're going to ask in to write language to create this kind of flexible.
Right, where you're not subdividing, and this, this is ways to do flexible development that are not something. Subdivisions will be in part two, phase two. But it does offer a lot more flexibility with building, I mean, Bruno's made it very clear to us multiple times that he doesn't like to build in the panel drive because of our zone.
No, he says he likes to go to towns and have, don't have some.
Yeah, that's.
Which is, which is a normal thing for.
Only leaves the places.
But there are some things, there are some things that are solving the, the.
Yes, they should be more flexible, especially if you're trying to create.
Yes.
You know, balance, like you're saying, cluster housing, those spaces, there's a question of who your
Absolutely.
rural character for the person who's driving by, and says, oh, that's pretty, or is it for your favor?
But it's also, it would also be important to there's, there's a danger when you talk about, well, we want to be flexible, then are you like, not getting any guidance at all, so there, a language has to make it clear what the town is looking for and not.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's flexible, but it's not, I mean, the performance expectations are clearly laid out in offering flexibility where flexibility can be had, but yeah, it's not a free-for-all.
Right.
Right.
Superstructure and some ways, yeah.
Okay, great.
And in fact, that was one of the clarifications that Nan said to me about conservation subdivision. She pointed out that our ordinance is lacking, the, but it's guideline statements that, you know, define, you know, what we really have, or what you got, and she sent me a new, um, package for conservation subdivision for us. And I think we're usable, get to that, but the criteria that she put in there are the same types of things that she's putting says. Yep, so that's it. And I think that's a big deal.
Right.
Open doors for flexible residential communities, much broader way, we do know. Yep, and then the last thing, um, we've had a lot of discussion in the planning board about flag lots. Nan made the point that she thinks flag lots give bum rap, but in fact, there are, uh, appropriate times when you're going to use a flag lot. And we got, and she sent me a write-up on a couple of pages, so a good example of flag lots and ladder samples. Uh, and I think that, uh, she can put into our phase one scope of the flag lots, uh, you know, what the purpose is, and then criteria for thinking of system appropriate application. And again, point is for housing, that the flag lot provides an opportunity for a a back property that could be separately owned, that would be less expensive because it's smaller, it didn't have a three hundred foot or whatever. But putting so if long as in phase one. Stay there. So I mean, with better definition for it.
It would just have one come through. And the guy explaining simple for the houses, there's nowhere for really yard, but having a fly pot behind provides outdoor space and parking space and so on.
Yeah. And someone who's got the road frontage could also sell off that. So it was.
Sure.
So then being afforded will over somebody and bring in income and not need to. Larger.
How does that work with the road frontage for the fly lot itself? I know multiple applications we've gotten that have varying sizes that we've gotten different answers on what was appropriate and not appropriate.
Right. So I think the existing language in the code is that you need at least a twenty-five foot.
Yeah, twenty-five feet.
Driveway.
I just know where to stay under that or.
Yeah. Uh, Nan and I hadn't talked about change. So that would be a minimum to be bigger.
That has a lot to do with fire access and things like that. Yeah.
So that's the third item on the agenda. Changes it still.
Hot topic. If somebody wants to lock the. So you do that. Wow. Fantastic. We have these conversations.
We're excited about something.
They're, they're trying to trying to juggle. Many of these comments and others, and I see, for example, on in this latest draft three, some things were not included. That were included in draft two, this conversation. Okay, definitions, uh, to be included. I thought these were accepted by the community. The community land trust is not here. Large scale retail, your secure foundation is not here.
So these are things that are highlighted in yellow that are.
Yeah.
From draft three.
Yeah. What were highlighted in yellow or be written on the side? I wrote this in. They were in the version that I have been using. And you know, the, the housing committee. Housing committee had made comments and I, my struggle here is to try to make sure the things that the housing committee asked for are included. Because you said this first phase is about housing. And yet there's a lot that I don't see reflected in the plan that we commented.
So I guess I have it clear about my list. I, I did not, and nobody on the planning board took the recommendations from the housing committee and put them into the scope that they had won. I thought the idea was that if there were things from the housing committee that you would like to have in phase one, aren't there, that you would bring them forward.
That's what I did. Now we sent that to everybody. We never went through them all line by line.
I, I never intended to go through the plan. I.
How do I do that? Can I say that right?
Well, it would have been nice to, I, I thought we talked about this a couple of times, but, uh, that if there were things in there that you thought were missing, that you would bring them to the people. And, and that didn't happen.
The simple order, you mean edits. Both. And I, you know, I'm. Marie and I had a comment and sit down and talked to Ray and Jane about what is this project plan versus spoken, like, yeah, we can jumped in, we got plunked in mid, you know, midstream. And so whole structure of this conversation has been really confusing. The housing committee thought when we handed this laborious document that we went through over two or three different meetings, that the planning board would actually look at those and didn't understand that I was supposed to bring them up line by line when, when I was supposed to do that. And I thought that's what we were getting to actually from one of these.
But it seems like there's still a good chance to get those definitions because most of this is phase two anyway. Right? So if some stuff is missing more of it, and just like, um, I managed to muscle in a few mine because, you know, but I think the whole idea, and I will go back with Nan to do definitions, that's phase two, right? I, there's a lot more that I have from zoning as well.
There's a lot that the, that the housing, a lot of comments that the housing committee made. And if you remember, the last time this came up, Nan remembered getting them, but hadn't really looked at the tone. So like, it was. Well, so Nan has them. Right. People having them apparently isn't enough.
Well, I don't know. I think it's important that Nan has them.
Well, most of what you've brought up at each meeting where you brought this up are things that aren't in phase one.
But if phase one is about housing.
Phase one is about what's on.
It's the start of housing. There's a lot, phase two, all the phases will keep having housing.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. So I, I went through all the comments for housing. And the things that for me felt like, yep, this, uh, this is sort of a low hanging fruit thing. It's something that we can easily uh, accomplish in phase one that I. Uh, there were definitely things in there that I read that appeared to be complicated and so I, I didn't.
Housing is the priority of phase one for low hang, and phase one is low hanging, easy fruit as things.
We didn't talk at all about parking. That's one of those. That's a specific. We didn't explain it. I never listened to the face of it.
There are probably many things, uh, in the housing committee write-up that are in phase.
We do, we didn't do much parking in phase one, did we?
I mean, the whole thing about green space, um, you know, and how much was required. I guess I'm worried that if things don't get brought up now, later on I'll get told, oh, we already covered that. You didn't bring it up. So.
Oh, I, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, and some of that green space and those kind of things, that would be included. Some of that would be included in what we're talking about the flexible design piece, right?
Well, you said that the discussion on open space was going to be held till this too. It's the flexible housing is going to be in phase one. But that will support open housing. So we're not like shooting ourselves in the foot with that the open space discussion in phase two. Did I get that right?
Absolutely. Yeah. But you know, again, that the intent in phase one was to pick up fairly limited scope of funds that we can learn how to process for, you know, get some experience with it. Also have a meaningful scope given place for phase one. And with a clear understanding that there will be a phase two, it's probably a phase three. That will come.
So would it be helpful for our?
If phase three starts at single space moment.
At the high, at just the, the chapter level headers on what's in phase one. So just to make sure that bar to where it's what's in phase one, I mean.
So the page one spoke is just highlighted on the record.
Yeah.
And then I also included in the agenda, the summary of the items. The people who didn't want to read through that in tables.
There is, yeah. Here's the phase one project scope. So you've got the mobile homes, subdivision of land, non-scope one. Data centers, battery storage. The chapter two seven. They've moved to phase two.
That's subdivision.
That's what, yeah, he was just saying they get so complicated. They're not coming out to phase two.
Oh, no. Two seven. What's, what's two seven?
So they have two forty-four seven.
Yeah. And that's going to go to phase two since that. It sounds.
It's not going to have like a manufactured housing to any homes.
It's, it sounds to me, Martha, as though your housing committee uh, offerings. Some of them got added into this phase one. I think it remains to somebody to go through the housing committee's offerings again.
Several of us have.
See, see what didn't get included and offer that for phase two. Does that make any sense? I mean, the issue, the major issue we had is about zoning, is about density and creating of more housing. And I'm concerned that if we go through this whole thing, um, and then can present this to the public, et cetera, et cetera, and then later come back with other things that are related to housing. Wait a minute, that's, you know, I did house. Um, for me.
Housing is way too big to put into one.
Yeah, I mean, it's. You've never done with housing. And I think there was a real priority to get the crypto thing figured out before the moratorium was up was a push, you know, also.
Also one of the main things.
You have to show them that we're waiting for them.
Also, one of the main things was to get the zoning rewrite started. So it's not super scary to the public.
Yeah.
And so we're starting with some sizable chunks that could easily pass and not get people all fired up about controversial issue. And I feel some like, hey, we're looking at this in a phased approach. Relating to all the issues and then we will answer all of those in subsequent things.
So there was, you know, we had comments about inclusionary zoning, about intent, uh, incentives. Nan suggested, well, uh, the idea of a number of incentives and you know, that kind of thing is maybe here.
I think it's all going to come. It's just, this is the first step. And the other things, just like even this first step, like John was saying, what I thought was simple wasn't, you know, and that it's just, there's, I just said to her, there's definitely going to be a phase seven, three, we're. But it just, it's going to come. It just you have to take off pieces that you can chew and digest.
I should think someone from Carolina. So they could see what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. They might have changed their mind.
They come to someone where there is no, you know, horrible things that has some traction.
All right. I guess I have to go back through all of this. Line by line, even documents that that raises anything that it seems really important needs to be done. Although it wouldn't be true that if she sent it to change to yeah, man, that if something you offered was pertinent to whatever was being discussed, you know, like say something about it and it's just coming.
Well, and, and part of what she's doing when she's coming up with this is going to be yeah, taking all those things into consideration for the sections that were working.
Yeah. Because we haven't clearly defined phase two yet, right? So it's not like we can look at Barbara's document and say, these are in phase two and these are in anticipating phase three so that they can see where their comments will be.
That's correct.
We're not that, we're not that.
On the summary document set out with the agenda. At the end, I listed a real rough beginning of both this future phase.
It's okay. You were just saying Barb and I'm just. Your name is Sam. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, John. You said summary and future basis.
Uh, and I, I included the document with the agenda, what a summary of scope in phase one. And at the, at the end of that, I also listed.
Yeah, I have that up on the screen.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, here it is. I'm sorry. Things that we didn't.
Yeah. So Nan, if you go to the end of that document.
This, this is the end. This is the agenda. It says suggestion ideas for phase two.
Oh, yes. Yep. 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 And again, it's.
Eight to seventy.
It, it's just the beginning. Yes. So two, two forty is subdivisions, two seventy is jobbing. And that's sort of a beginning part where we decided, oh, we want to put it phase two.
All right. Let me just talk about, so two forty is not, is not in.
Not in phase one.
That's not in phase one because we had a particular comment on that. But it seems, seems that the, the balance of the way it's described, the purpose of that. Uh, the parcel of space and manager feature section is totally, you can't cut a tree down. Um, I mean, that's to make it to be more balanced. Um, within housing, you've got spoke related to housing. This is summary. Um, among the things that we we identified, I think, just take them off. Uh, was issue of parking, which matters. You know, how much parking do you require really matters as far as you know, density of your allowing greater height uh, in certain neighborhoods, density bonuses. Allowing, especially allowing greater density wherever there's water and sewer. Um, incentives for housing development. Definitions and requirements for green space, for example, environment, changing that. Definitions of what's okay in the neighborhood conservation district. Or neighbor residential. Uh, PUD goals and requirements setbacks in filling housing. Um, and I'm concerned about the land use map itself and where the zones are. Route thirteen corridor versus the. So is that all stuff that would go into into phase two?
Phase two or phase three, though, you know, we haven't nailed it down. As we've said, point is that there will definitely be housing spoke things. That's the basis.
Right. And I would think like the zoning map would be a much later phase because we'd have to define all the zoning first, right? And then do the map. That's something.
Well, one issue though is that the longer that gets put off. Well, you know, then it's another two, three.
Right.
Years before somebody might actually start doing what we're
I, I.
Interested in having done instead of what's.
Well, I'm hoping this project doesn't take us three years.
Martha, the flip side of that is that the more we put in phase one, the longer it can take us for release phase one. And my experience is that these are hard conversations. They're complicated. It takes a long time. I'm anxious to release first piece, I think it's a meaningful piece of legislation that will make a difference here in Biden. I would like to get it done.
I think to comment too, that the small bites that are digestible and understandable and scary
Yeah.
will help so that we don't end up in a, like in the Carolina situation. So we can actually make things happen.
It don't get into people with tons of changes and.
And that's a wrong thing. Maybe move faster with small, smaller stuffs.
Yeah.
But I think a big chunk of work she just described as in phase two, because it's two subtly, right? Two forty or two.
Two forty or two.
Okay. So in this, in your summary, that's saying it's phase two of the future. Okay. As soon as they finish phase one, the sooner they're going to get started on yours.
Well, and there are things in this first phase that are housing too, right? Which are.
Yeah. No, I understand. Yeah, there's, there's meaningful number of items that is incorporated. Elder cottages. Okay. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to like make sure I ditch the right versions of these things. Keep the right.
Okay. So the next item for, I, I hope we get some clarification on this. Uh, there's been discussion that our phase one zoning needs to include results and recommendations from groundwater study that done here, um, two, three, four years ago. Uh, and that specifically would have to do with, uh, controlling density in places in the town where they have either capacity or, or order quality problems. Uh, which is a great idea. The problem that I have is that my reading of the groundwater study said there's zero location based recommendations from places that have. Uh, quality or quantity problems with water, it's not there, and maybe somebody has commented, I just can't see it. Uh, you know, Jason mentioned it, Ray mentioned it to me, uh, and I'm trying to get clarification on this. If, if there is information in the groundwater study that would inform zoning, specifically on density limits based on water problems. Please show it to.
You mean, the, the study kind of says, here's how much water there is, but it doesn't say this amount, this water could support. Forty more housing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. There's no map, says here, here are some places where you guys have quality, there's nothing.
And it will change, like, is groundwater the stuff above rock, right? And, and do they now require that if you drill a new well, it's supposed to go into rock?
I, I'm not sure on this, I thought I heard something about that, because people were complaining my well is only thirty six feet deep.
Yeah.
When I sent out, my sister said, I'm never drinking water from your house.
On, on the planning board, we occasionally have a property owner come in to make a comment on proposed development near their house.
Uh huh.
Where they will say to us on the planning board. Uh, I have problems with my well, and I'm concerned that if you let this project happen, it's gonna make my problems worse.
Zoning has people come to that too.
And the challenge is, is how do you develop, uh, any kind of an analytical. On well, the aquifer behaviors, that's a really hard thing to do.
You don't think you know, there's something in zoning that we can, we, we can't say, okay, you can't build it because there's not enough water. It's already, you have to follow other rules, so, you know, even if we have ten neighbors, in one case, there were a lot of neighbors saying, we just can't. But it isn't, we have no legs to stand on to deny it for that reason, you've tried other reasons.
Science isn't that clear, I mean, like, they, basically, they drill till they hit water. You can have a neighbor drill and hit water at sixty feet, and their next door neighbor drills to like seven hundred and eighty feet. You're in completely different layers of water, so I, I, I don't know how.
And there's our Asian systems, there's our Asian systems all around me, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, and I was told that years ago at my house, whatever their original well was. After, they built a house down on the creek, which is down below.
Mm hmm.
The well went dry. And that, they didn't know that, I was told, I mean, I, that's all hearsay, this. And that was a brown water study, the one that was done. During the anti-fracking town.
No, this one was more recent than that.
Wasn't the groundwater study more because they were interested in recharge of things?
This was after the drought. Wasn't it, it was after the drought and there was a lot of, I mean, travel, which can, the water's.
The people who know the most about water are the well owners.
Mm hmm.
And I think that nowadays, they're all, and for a long time, they've been required to report. Where they found water to the, to the health department, so the health department should have knowledge of. At what depth. People were finding water at various places.
Yeah, and that's all I'll do it, uh, from my perspective.
It's not summarized.
It's, it's not, uh, it's not a cut and dry thing, this is research.
Twig, it was, it's, it's, right, exactly, the divining rod, you know. I don't think it was U S G S, it was, it was a guy.
It was funded by New York State.
The New York Rural Water Association.
Right. Yes, so I just want, uh, if several people brought it up that they'd like to see it in phase one, uh, my sense is that there is nothing there to put in. Really begin, we're driving to develop criteria for where we've got abundance of good water and where we don't. That's not a simple thing, it's a very complex, and it might even be impossible.
So then we'd be saying, well, you have X many houses drilling at thirty seven feet. You know, then the number of houses beyond that have to drill seven hundred feet because you have a different water table, I, it can get really weird.
And you can have, you can have water, but you can have slow, slow, slow flow. And, and need to have one of those tanks put in.
Yes.
Yep, to my neighbor's headquarters.
Yeah.
My well's the shallow one on the road.
You can have sulfur water.
The county has one doing, it's an incredible aquifer study that gets updated every year. Twenty five years, done by U S G S, and then. There's Gina, if you can find out, the staff will find out. What do they have?
You know, I'm betting anything that's gonna be more about recharge for the city water supply. Because the whole is bad. Right, but that's, they, they need the countywide data because the streams feed. Because there's the whole like lake versus stream water draw. And it because one of the only, is one of like two or three in the whole state that still does stream draw water. Sorry, I learned way too much during that.
The point is, the county has something, if, if you can check with county staff. And see what they have and see, maybe it could be mapped together with this rural water association.
If the town starts telling people. That you can build here because there's water. And then they build and they don't find water, can they sue the town? Maybe we don't want to go there.
The other thing is, you look out west where there is no water and people still build, but then they develop water collection systems, they pay to have water brought in. It was, we may wanna be able to statement to explain why we don't include it, but we would have to. We'd have to know a way where to start trying to zone.
I can remember talking with the man who came in to do the water study. In the aughts.
Mm hmm.
And asking him if there was a way that I could know. That if my neighbor down the road allowed a fracking well to go in, would that affect my well? And he said to me. Nobody knows this. Nobody knows where the folds are. He said, we can't anticipate.
I, I would just interject that from a zoning point of view, many zoning laws. Uh, require for, either for certain uses or for certain size developments, that there be well pump tests done. So that they have to drill test wells and then they have to evaluate the draw when they draw from those test wells on existing wells. So that's a common thing that you can, you can add into zoning and, and it can either be required for certain. Under certain circumstances or, um, let, so that may, written in a way that the planning board could require it if the circumstances. You know, made you feel like that was something that needed to be done, but, um, pump tests are done all the time to, when development happens to determine. Impact on neighboring wells. I mean, we don't, we might not know what, what, what cracks they're drawing from, but, um, there, that's a very common practice.
I think it's a lot of sense. Versus trying to guess based on.
Where in the district and stuff, yeah. So are we, are we asking you men to write that, write that up?
Is there?
I, I, that is, you know, we certainly can, that's up to, my to-do list is your to-do list.
Yeah, that seems like a good way to, very practical, yeah. And so.
Couple of conversations.
So Nan, that would go into subdivision ordinance?
Um. It could go in the subdivision or it could go in, um, like for instance, um, it could be associated with certain uses. Or certain locations, um, that could go in the zoning, uh, so it, 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 um. I'm sure we could find a place for it in the zoning, I'm not sure exactly, yeah, I guess it would depend on if you want it. Um, and I'd have to look at the aquifer study again, um, but they usually tell you where there are. Areas that have low water yields and areas that have good water yields, um, so, or it could be just that. In, when you do special use permit, site plan review or subdivision, it's the discretion of the planning board to require a pump test. If, if you feel that that's needed, it could go in all three places.
Also be for businesses, they're gonna have a heavy water draw, right? Focus it on anticipating a water, heavy water usage.
It, it seems like some version of that should go in this phase one, if you're gonna allow flexible cluster. Housing too, because then at least you then have the option to say before you build.
Mm hmm.
This little community, make sure there's water, so it does seem like. Some version of what we suggested makes a lot of sense to put here.
So Nan, can you include that?
Yep.
Yeah, you know, yeah, okay, yeah.
Would you want to include it for anything?
And be cautious because it'll be very expensive, we don't wanna. We don't wanna have somebody who's, you know. On a, clearly isn't gonna be impacting anybody else's wells, have to incur.
They, they might want to say, if somebody's new to building and having something built. It might be good to ask to tell them, it might be wise of them to ask the neighborhood. What their water supply is like, because it turns out pretty much everybody across the creek from me, which would include you. Are, are, have a lower waterfall in general. Well, maybe you're down lower, so maybe you're, hey, Suzanne has a horrible, Linda has a horrible, it's just a lot of people. Have real water problems on that side, really, and. I, you know, I. There was one summer Suzanne was coming getting water from me, well, almost every day. And I said, I, I, the only time I ever ran my feet out was when I left the hose line all day on full. Forgot to turn it off during the drought. That was it.
So, so Nan drafts something, we can. We can look at it and say, and chew it around and try to figure out how this works and where to plot, right?
Right.
Yeah, sure, I mean, everything is a draft. I mean, and when it comes to water users, I mean, the kind of general rule, I mean, the Rural Water Association and most of their reports say. Well, um, test wells should be done whenever a user is gonna draw more than a thousand gallons of water per day. That's kind of just a rule of thumb, it's not, you know, so, i- it could be just that we leave it. General that the planning board may require a pump well test. And that for high water users greater than X number of gallons, that they will require a water, a test, a test well.
So you'll include those in your write-up, Nan?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, and again, in the study that we had two or three years ago, I'm pretty sure there's nothing in there. Uh, that talks about specific locations in the town, the quality, quantity of water, there's nothing.
Which is what's good about what she's suggesting, because you don't need that.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Right, well, and, and again, it's, like she said, somebody built into multiple parts of this, so it's certainly incorporate and use of work on it.
Yeah.
But then it'll also be included, like when getting the subdivisions and the data.
On a later note, do we wanna incorporate in some of the recommendations that came from, uh, D U O R S P, uh, presentation in the. Drinking water source protection.
Well, that was, uh. Set back from.
The conservation, the, the Perry and O'Leary District Stream Subnet Law. Creative environmental area, you know, the way, you know, the way Steve's was. They, they had some recommendations on some crossover and conservation subdivisions.
Phase two with water. But it's definitely something, I mean, those are part of, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, what's the name of this study?
Study? Um. I did write down though.
So it's, so it's the New York Water Rural Association?
Oh, there it is, well, it's the Town of Brighton Drinking Water Source Protection Program. And in fact, that's what it was more about, was identifying. Where there are potential sources of pollution. Old gas station, stuff like that.
Hmm. They presented and they weren't finding anything, I think.
Yeah.
This was like, they, they do it every three years, they test like in four locations for. For toxins, and they were saying that they hadn't seen anything go up. In the last few years, I mean, it's, it's. Yeah, it's not gonna be holistic for this entire town.
E P, E federal, E P A has a list of. Yeah, so that issue that you might, it's. The point source pollution, see, some specific. Areas of concern, you know, but this, this issue of supply. Are you gonna have enough? For a member of us all or something?
And it is honestly gonna depend here. The reality is, we learn from drought, it will depend.
The search functions on our teller's side are.
Ah, okay, folks, next item, uh, with the agenda, I included, um. Draft number three with project plan, uh, and I marked in red all the places in the plan where I got seed bags from. So, did anybody see anything in there that they thought was wrong? There's a lot there, there is, let's see, document.
It is.
Yes, I, I will say on page. Sun data center. Definition of data center, blah, blah, blah. The definition includes data centers whose principal use is artificial intelligence and the mining cryptocurrency. And this is really nerdy, but I think it should say and or the mining of.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree.
Um, what page are you, what page were you looking at?
It's page five, um. Draft three.
Yeah, definitely should say and or, you're right. Right, I will make that change.
This artificial intelligence and or.
Cause somebody could set up a facility with a boat.
Right, but you can imagine. Somebody's doing crypto and according to this, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, granted, it's the same hardware.
Dana Lloyd, but you know.
I think that's.
He was in trouble, tried to do something that would override local zoning.
I don't know if he, oh, local zoning, he, I don't know if it affects zoning, but he. He is trying to, in the big beautiful bill, he is trying to, uh. Make it so that state and local governments cannot pass laws regulating again.
For ten years.
For ten years.
Uh, so if we have this in here.
Well.
And the same law, in the same piece, it says AI and or data centers. And he nullifies that, this says AI. But can he do that?
I, I don't think, personally, I don't think he can do it.
Find this. Well, he doesn't have to, somebody will be.
I, I don't think, but, I, I, so, what I, what I would say is, I don't think we wanna worry about that right now, I mean, you, you are, there is the potential. He, he is trying to, uh. Cause several states have passed laws regulating AI and safety and privacy of information and all sorts of things.
Yeah.
And, and so, but yes, there, there is a provision. Uh, in this bill right now that's being debated, uh, that would make it, you know, ten years that state and local governments could not. Pass laws regulating AI. Now, zoning law, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that zoning law. With zoning law, uh, cause what, what we're talking about is zoning law, we're, we're allowing it, we're just saying where it can be.
That's states, right, but that's what you zone them.
Depends on the language, right?
It depends on like, it, it depends on the language of the law.
I, I knew. This, this, this was.
Go to this from Black Hole. We're not saying, Marjorie Taylor Greene didn't know it was in there, she didn't have read that part, so.
She hadn't read it.
Did she read any of them?
I was gonna say, I mean.
That's a hell of a lot to read.
I guess so.
Little cart, it's only her job.
Okay, guys, yeah, yeah, let's not, let's not go down that path.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, there, there is a potential. That the, if, you know, if this thing passes federally, there is a potential that this regulation of AI.
Uh, anything else?
About that?
Yes.
With, with the fracking. The argument hinged on regulation and banning. So if the, if, if the choices between. Not being able to regulate at all, banning.
Ban. In my opinion, towards. In my opinion, choice.
Okay.
But I I think we cross that bridge when it comes, right? I I think, I don't, I don't think it changes what we're recommending.
It's gonna end up in court if he gets it.
Absolutely.
As a state rights, I mean, it's.
I know, there was a statement that we. That was in here, I don't see it in here. That the ADU can be as tall as the principal.
Do we have height limits for structures?
Uh, we do, I think we said it had to be. Equal to or less.
It says. RIA establishes that ADUs must be subordinate in arid and carried to the same kind of dwelling form, this does not address height. And this should also be subordinate to the principal dwelling. Housing committee said, you know, we don't think so, you know. What if that that could actually? Make it impossible, Wilson, so.
Um, or what if it's an existing structure, like I'm gonna turn my, I'm just gonna be fun for a minute, what if I wanna turn my Sato into an ADU? Which, by the way, that's been done in this way, but um. If it's an existing structure with a height not. Not matter.
Like not what you read earlier, that it could be as tall as the principal rest.
It's a new structure.
Period, also, it can be as tall as. The principal residence, that's not in here.
Yeah, I could put, and that makes sense, so for example, if you have a ranch house, single story house. About the same story that you could give, that would be the same.
Yeah, but if you have a two story home. It's a tall two two story home.
Yeah.
You know, then you're gonna have to do.
Various.
Can no one know you can't build a uh some six story townhouse in Brighton?
No.
There are.
Oh, there are height limits?
Yep.
What is it?
But you have a ranch, you have a small barn far back, you can convert it, might be tall. But it seems complicated to just say. Can only be as tall.
But if something exists, you could convert it.
So let's say you're like a smart and it's a ranch. And then way in your backyard, you have a small barn you wanna convert. But that's actually taller than the ranch.
Yeah.
It, the height thing seems complicated to me to restrict it to the height of that house.
So if we just say strict to the height of the house, it's a new structure, and if it's an existing structure, it's. Gonna require a variance. The unboxing has a good idea.
So Nan, how do how do other communities handle this?
Yeah, I mean, I think that some communities allow. ADUs to be in existing structures, regardless of the like a barn. Or, you know, some garage or something that's already there and they don't worry about the height, but for new structures that are built. They, you know, the whole, the whole notion of an ADU is that they are subordinate in all ways to the primary structure. So they're almost always shorter and smaller than the principal dwelling. Because they're accessory structures, they're not secondary principal buildings. But you could, you could certainly allow conversion of an existing building. To an ADU that um. You don't wanna worry about the height, but uh my recommendation for a lot of reasons um. For uh for new structures would be that they be subordinate in size and height to the the existing. Principal structure on the property and and that that comes down to getting into um. You know, a lot of, a lot of communities, um. A lot of the ADUs that are built are um. You know, have their, they're not on their, let's put it this way, they can be very controversial, so. They're accessory structures, they're not principal structures, so you have to keep them accessory structures.
And and.
I think it's a choice, actually, that's not. I don't, I don't think that's a rule and I, it feels to me like that's really restricting people's opportunities.
So I mean, covers two single family homes on a lot separately. So if you don't wanna have it be subordinate, then you're going to a different part zoning, that's about two simple things, homes on a lot.
Okay, without, without some. Right.
The more I think about your your comment, uh. Those, we've had different ones that come from planning board, we converted. Building, but it becomes a second, becomes another primary building. It's a different use, so I guess it depends, so we're taking a barn. I I think that's another primary structure, it's not an ADU.
Really, there's a lot of ADUs need to be, ADU accessible and things like that, so they tend by nature to be. Not to be tall.
Because my point is, I think it's covered in the review, because we would look at like, oh. You're converting this other primary structure that's on this building to new use. But then it.
Does that get viewed completely differently then?
Well, if you're converting a garage or something.
That could be.
Yeah, so, or a small barn, but but it sounds like Nan has the solution, which is existing versus new construction. ADU would be by right. Structure go through. ADU would be by rights and the secondary structure would be go through.
Converting an existing structure.
Building a new.
Equal structure or larger than principal. All right, do we wanna say anything specifically about converting?
She's gonna be. The, so you know, the height limitations are important, fire departments, things like that, so I. We're gonna allow a story building, they're gonna train the fire factors in the planning. So that's where, that's where sometimes the height is related to other things.
So if it's not clear in the language, I'll make sure it says that new structures will be subordinate. Will allow existing structures. Other. But you're. Reading that, but you're taking a barn. Those smaller than that, and bigger than. Turning it, you're not really turning it.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Height doesn't, so my mom just renovated, it is a tiny house, it is like two hundred square feet, but it. It's all, it's got a little box. So that's where I'm just thinking I can see where it may end up being ten feet taller. Than a ranch, if. Doing a walk or something, just saying that I can see where they could have that happen.
And they need it back needs.
For maybe, for maybe you like that, they would need it. What I'm saying, but like, what the swing is, is that those things are generally, they're bigger than what original, than the. Private, but there's gonna be another primary, so.
Right, but big doesn't always mean, that's. Just because it's taller doesn't mean it's bigger.
No, I I get that.
Well, in here, you've said, if you take a barn and convert it to two units in in five under this article. Uh, thirteen or whatever, three, whatever, page twenty one, and that become, that probably becomes something else. You can have three units if you have three acres, I mean, there's all kinds of that. We just dealt with that, right? And so today, so. Yeah, maybe it stops being called an accessory structure, yeah, this was.
All right, so the next one, the uh again, I included the draft summary of the the major changes that were proposed. Uh, it did that primarily on board, taken them, probably everybody. Well, thirteen. Uh, pages. Now, any comments on that? What? And again, guys, this is the starting. The town board, I just want to look at this and then it'll get released. Uh, Nan will start writing draft zoning language. See best.
I'm only gonna have a quick review.
Okay, yeah, so uh the next step, I think, is they, I'll make these minor tweaks to the uh project plans. And I'll send them, I guess I'll send them, I'll send it to everybody, but uh. Whether this needs to go on the town board agenda or whatever, I'll leave that to somebody else to. Figure out, uh, eventually, if we put into the agreement. That we have it.
So. So two seventy stuff is in phase one or?
It's not, but it's been out, right?
It's gonna be in.
It's you guys do again next time. It said phase one before, but he changed it because it got too complicated.
Two seventy and seventy, all two seventy.
Two forty, maybe. But it's. It's two forty. I don't like it. It's just forty and two seven, those aren't meaningful numbers. Two seventy is zoning part of the code. Four is part of the code. But also includes a building code. So for example, the stuff two seventy, varnish regulations, that's not in phase one?
Uh, if it's in, it was highlighted there and I didn't put any red text next to it, it stays in phase one.
I'll go through it once again.
So we may get at least one meeting. While the town board processes all this and whatever time it takes for this to make its way into a bar agreement with Nan. And then for her to start writing zoning language next.
So if we get this done this month, the next two meetings, you guys don't get a time to get out, right?
Uh, it's not for us to review, I don't know, and I guess.
Fine, August could be dicey.
I guess, well. I'm assuming Nan's gonna take some time to actually do all this before we see a draft. Should we be working on the scope for phase two? Well, that's a lot. Uh, we can, we need to have a discussion on who's gonna put the time, but I have bad weeks. And it's, and I hadn't anticipated doing. Hopefully throw and do it again. We need to discuss how that happened.
I guess what what I'm saying is rather than like taking time off is maybe, and and I don't have a problem with July, like taking a month off like in July. But what I'm saying is just that. There's gonna be these periods of time where like Nan's off doing first thing, we're waiting for a draft to come back. Maybe we can take that time to be, you know, sort of working at space, let's go with them in space, so.
Yeah, and I think the discussion is uh who or what subcommittee, whatever, will draft strong and. Yep, smoking that.
Okay. Yep, okay.
We have a good temple.
We need to have the discussion of what went well and what didn't go so well with phase one. And use that with. And I'd like to thank everybody for getting together, this really doesn't work well without it, but. A broad group of people. I think they're really, I think.
Might be.
So thank you.
Thank you for putting all the other.
Yes. Wrangling the police.
I don't know if any of us actually wanna leave, if you look out there.
You know.
Yeah. I'll get, I'll get home and see if I.
German. Yes, I think we're, thanks everybody.
All right, bye bye.